Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the Hamlet City Council to order. We will start with a moment of silence. Okay, next, in line is the adoption of agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
All in favor? Any opposed? Now the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, city manager's report.
Good evening, council and Hamlet citizens. So this report's going to provide an update on the key developments, departmental progress, strategic initiatives, and intergovernmental engagement efforts within the city of Hamlet. Over the last month's initiatives, we've been working pretty hard and we have a lot to show for it, and it's been a month of continued progress across infrastructure, public safety, code enforcement, and community partnerships. The following itemized are going to summarize recent achievements and ongoing initiatives to support our vision for the thriving and resilient Hamlet we all are seeking to get to. After the report, Mayor Gwynn's also asked me if I would say something in dedication to 9/11, and I'm honored to say that, so I've prepared a statement for that as well. So for Memorial Park, Memorial Park remains a centerpiece of parks and recreation programming. The field is restricted only when necessary for projects or maintenance to preserve its conditions. Earlier this year, soccer activities were temporarily moved to Buttercup Field based on inaccurate information. Once clarified, play was immediately restored to Memorial Field. Transparency and accountability remain priorities, and when mistakes occur, I'll take responsibility for those and act swiftly to correct them. I also want to address our police, fire, and EMS. Our first responders, police, fire, and EMS face danger every day, often experience trauma that remains within them for life. Despite this, they serve with courage and dedication. Their sacrifices are often unseen and subject to scrutiny, yet they remain on the front line as defenders of this community. I'm proud beyond words of their professionalism and their commitment. After 20 years of serving fighting our nation's enemies overseas, I'm now committed to fighting for the funding, resources, recognition, and support that our first responders deserve here at home. We've also been working with the Sandhills Community Action Program. That program is identifying renovation opportunities, and discussions are in a way to align projects that can improve our community well-being, with updates to follow as the relationship development develops. When it comes to our UDO, code right planners have submitted their summary tables for review as part of the Unified Development Ordinance Modernization Project. These projects provide clear, or these tables provide clear comparisons and proposed updates, consolidations, and refinements to zoning and land use regulations. This milestone reflects continued progress toward modernizing our policies and support responsible growth, economic development, and community livability. Our system development fee study. Our consulting firm continues to analyze our system development fees with the goal of presenting recommendations before the holiday season. These fees will ensure that the cost of new infrastructure is fairly shared by growth and development, reducing the financial burden on current residents while creating a sustainable funding source for water and wastewater needs. When it came to the 3M settlement payment, you know, the state received a settlement after the PFAS funds were distributed, and the city of Hamlet received its second settlement payment from them in the amount of $293,475 in 1906. This payment is part of the National PFAS Settlement Agreement and is intended to offset costs associated with water quality monitoring, treatment, and long-term infrastructure needs. Funds will be deposited in accordance with settlement requirements and will support ongoing improvements to safeguard Hamlet's water system. Amazon partnership. We've met with Amazon Web Services again, and they're exploring a potential partnership with the city of Hamlet to provide up to 500,000 gallons per day of wastewater treatment capacity for several months out of the year. Kim Lee Horn Engineering Firm has been hired by AWS to evaluate feasibility. Key notes on this is AWS would be responsible for all costs related to system extensions, connections, and required system development fees, and if feasible, this partnership would create a significant new revenue stream for Hamlet's wastewater system without burdening existing taxpayers. The initiative reflects our proactive approach to economic development and infrastructure Digital water meter readers, the city staff believe water loss is critically impacting revenues for wastewater rehabilitation. To address this, meter SYS has been invited to present at the October council meeting. Two implementation options will be considered. Number one is a phased implementation, gradual replacement of meters, spreading costs while beginning to improve accuracy. The second will be a full implementation for state-system-wide replacement, achieving immediate accuracy and full revenue recapture. I've also spoken with USDA, US Department Agriculture, and they've expressed interest in supporting this upgrade through a grant loan package that is both a grant and loan, similar to our wastewater treatment plant funding structure. Our city water projects, water can, work continues both on water treatment plant rehabilitation and our wastewater treatment plant development, which began with federal ARPA funds during COVID. These projects have been ongoing for years, not driven by recent political rhetoric, and are essential to ensuring safe and reliable systems for decades to come. LKN Engineering is on the agenda tonight to provide a thorough update to council and our residents. Animal control. The city provides limited animal control services while more complex cases are handled by Richmond County Animal Control. A persistent challenge is the county shelter's limited capacity, and in my professional opinion, the shelter requires urgent financial support to expand and improve their services for all municipalities countywide. Code enforcement. Jamie Tucker continues to enforce ordinances fairly and consistently. The process is pretty simple, a notice is given, and a grace period for compliance. If they don't comply, fines and compliance, fines are to follow, and if the fines aren't paid, then we refer that to the city attorney to handle. This approach ensures fairness while maintaining community standards, but citizens are encouraged to take pride in their properties and assist in building a clean, safe, and welcoming city. The city's also hired a part-time building inspector focused solely on condemnations. We're reviewing identified projects and formal steps will begin soon, actually as early as tomorrow, to address those posing public safety hazards. This enhances our ability to protect safety and improve livability in Hamlet. I also wanted to remind you all that I'll be attending the service-to-service orientation at the Ohio State University on September 11th and 12th, this Thursday and Friday. This is a national fellowship that supports veterans by providing advanced leadership training, mentorship, and networking. Participation strengthens Hamlet's representation nationally and ensures we continue to bring the best practices home to our community. This orientation's also 100% funded by UNC Chapel Hill, no cost to the city of Hamlet. The city of Hamlet has also been awarded a $10,000 grant through Amazon Richmond County, North Carolina Fund to support a fire hose extended lays project through our fire department. This funding will enhance our fire department's operational readiness by improving long-distance water supply capabilities during incidents where hydrant access is limited, and we want to just go ahead and make it public that we appreciate Amazon's support of our local public safety initiatives. Update on the Opera House, the city's in the process of securing a lead-in asbestos examination for the Hamlet Opera House, and that essential step attained at a very low cost represents important progress towards positioning the facility for future renovations. Staff also met with the North Carolina Forestry Service to discuss downtown streetscape improvements, and forestry experts are consulting with us about the best type of tree species for long-term growth and sustainability while also guiding us through a grant process that could provide additional funding and financial support in the future. In the closing remarks, the city of Hamlet continues to move forward with purpose and measurable results. We're advancing critical infrastructure, strengthening public safety, modernizing our development codes, and forming partnerships that bring outside expertise and resources into our community. Our work has positioned Hamlet to capture unprecedented, president, external funding support. Some examples of that is a $10 million, $364,000, $10 million, $364,000 water plant improvement grant, another $6 million wastewater treatment plant grant, $400,000 in grants for stormwater study, $300,000 for wastewater and water studies, and on the agenda tonight for a resolution adoption is another $4 million, $925,000 for critical infrastructure improvements. Total project funding secured equals $21 million, $989,000 for our critical infrastructure improvements grants, not on the taxpayers of Hamlet, those are grants to the state. In addition, the city has secured an approved USDA low-interest loan in the amount of $11 million, $559,000, further strengthening our capacity to modernize our essential systems. Together, these investments total $33 million, $548,000, and clearly demonstrate the city of Hamlet's unwavering commitment to accountability, transparency, and dedication. To suggest otherwise overlooks the significant progress being made and diminishes the hard work of the professionals entrusted in managing our city operations. We deeply appreciate those who recognize and support these efforts. To our partners, stakeholders, and community members, thank you for your continued trust. Together, we're building a stronger, more resilient Hamlet, one that honors our past, delivers in the present, and prepares for the future. Now, I promised you guys that we would have an update and a surprise tonight, and I know I've been keeping you guys on your toes, but we've been waiting years for our finalized stamp on our water treatment plant for construction, and as of today, we received from DEQ the stamp of approval to begin construction on our water treatment plan.
Yes.
So, big, big deal and big moves are coming for the city of Hamlet in the near future.
We've been waiting months and months and months.
It's been ongoing for several years, so, you know, we really appreciate DEQ, and even more importantly, you know, we do have LKC Engineering here, and they'll be talking through these, these projects that we have ongoing, but without LKC, we would not be in the position where we are today, so thank you so much, Adam Keiker. Um, good news. Any questions on that? I'll switch over to the message for September 11th. You guys have any questions? No? So, September 11, 2001 is a day that forever altered this nation, our nation. On that morning, 2,977 innocent Americans, mothers, fathers, brothers, sisters, and friends, were taken from us. Alongside them were 343 firefighters, 72 law enforcement officers, 55 military personnel, and one US Fish and Wildlife Officer that made the ultimate sacrifice. These were the men and women who selflessly ran into danger without regard of their own well-being. They demonstrated bravery beyond reproach when the world was collapsing around them. But the toll didn't stop there. Over 1,400 of our rescue workers have since died from illnesses tied to the toxic aftermath. That number includes another 341 firefighters who succumbed to rare cancers and diseases causes, caused by exposures at Ground Zero. Additionally, since September 11th, thousands of our service members have made the ultimate sacrifice in response to those attacks in what has become known as the global war on terrorism. In Afghanistan, 2,219 died in direct combat, in Iraq, 3,482 were killed in hostile action, in Syria, 23 gave their lives in combat. Across all post-9/11 battlefields, more than 7,000 US service members have died in combat, and beyond the battlefield, thousands more veterans and first responders have taken their own lives as a result of the trauma carried from that day and the wars that followed. But the Americans didn't stand alone. Our Kurdish fighters, our allies, also paid unimaginable price. More than 11,000 Kurdish fighters were killed, and another 22,000 were wounded in the fight against ISIS in northern and eastern Syria. Those we lost weren't just heroes, dozens of them were people I called brothers and sisters. They're nothing less than family to me. This message is not simply about loss, it's about resilience. We remember to honor not only the tragedy of that day, but the lives behind every number. We remember the grief, and even more, the unity forged through it. Terrorists tried to break us, love, courage, and patriotism held us together. So on this upcoming 24th anniversary of 9/11, I encourage each of you to remember that we are all American patriots first and foremost. Set aside your differences and speak the names of those who fell, and those who continue to fall in defense of this great nation and its people. It is because of them, and it is because of you, that this country stands as a nation built on three enduring principles: liberty, security, and equality.
All right, thank you. Next is our proclamation for National Senior Citizen Month.
I can't imagine why Amy asked me to do this. National Senior Center Month Proclamation. Whereas older Americans are significant members of our society, investing their wisdom and experience to help and enrich and strengthen our community, and whereas the Hamlet Senior Center has acted as a catalyst for mobilizing the creativity, energy, vitality, and commitment of the older residents of Hamlet, North Carolina, and whereas through the wide array of services, programs, and activities, senior citizens empower, senior centers empower older citizens of Hamlet, North Carolina, to contribute to their own health and well-being and the health and well-being of their fellow citizens of all ages. And whereas Hamlet Senior Center has been a community partner in ensuring that older adults in our community are able to stay connected, safe, and healthy, and whereas the Hamlet Senior Center in Hamlet, North Carolina, affirms the dignity, self-worth, and independence of older persons by facilitating their decisions and actions, tapping their experiences, skills, and knowledge, and enabling their continued contributions to the community. Now, therefore, I, Amy H. Gwynn, do hereby proclaim September 2025 National Senior Center Month, and call upon all citizens to recognize the special contributions of the senior center participants and the special efforts of the staff and volunteers who work every day to enhance the well-being of the older citizens of our community.
Thank you.
We have our senior center director with us, and we appreciate everything you do, Amanda.
All right, the next one is the proclamation for Constitution Week. Whereas it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the 237th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designated September 17 through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, Amy Gwynn, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Hamlet, do hereby proclaim the week of September 7th through 23rd as, 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week, and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. All right, next we have Mr. Adam Keiker, and we invited him here in light of recent concerns about our water quality. Adam is with LKC Engineering. He's here to give a timeline for the studies that have been ongoing and the work that will be done at our water treatment plant in the future, near future.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Thanks for the opportunity to be here. Were you able to pull up the slideshow? Okay. So, your manager asked that I come give an update, and what I've prepared is just a brief update on really three projects and then one funding source, and I'll go through this and then welcome any questions that you may have about what we go over, and your managers did a wonderful job of covering a lot of this already, so I'll try not to repeat.
Well, I messed that up, Adam. I apologize. Give me one second.
Quite, quite all right. I'll, I'll kind of jump in and then while he pulls it up. So the first project, Mayor, is your water plant rehabilitation. This is one that you received funding for in early 2023. This American Rescue Plan funds $10 million, $300,000, and that project, we finished design several months ago. We opened bids back in May, I believe, and we've brought the contract to you, and you have awarded it to Dellinger. Your manager spoke correctly that we have been working on the construction permitting for this for over nine months, and very coincidentally, today, the permit was issued, so nothing to do, they certainly didn't know that you were meeting tonight, but that is good news. So it does clear the path for this project to start, and you'll start seeing, you should expect to start seeing actual construction activities early next year. There's a lot of work going on in our shop, a lot of paperwork and procurement of equipment and materials, but actual moving of earth would be early next year. It is funded, it's a 13,000, almost 14, excuse me, 13 million, almost $14 million overall budget. Most of that is American Rescue Plan funds, $10 million, $364,000, and then you used a small, a portion, excuse me, not smaller, a portion of your 2023 state budget appropriation to close the budget gap on that one. It's a, it's a fairly comprehensive rehabilitation effort. It's, the most important thing it's doing is it will demolish your old filters that were, are over 100 years old, and build a brand-new filter structure to replace that with modern technology, modern instrumentation, every, all the bells and whistles and controls. It implements a new technology of backwash that's been around for about a decade that will, should significantly improve some of the water quality challenges. And you have onsite storage tanks, both of which are old, one is very old, the other one's in the dates to the 80s, but we're demolishing both of those and building brand-new storage tanks as well. We're also, through this, simplifying the treatment process, changing some of the chemical feed. All of that is geared towards giving your operators just more ammunition to battle a broad range of raw water quality coming to it, and to continue to maintain compliance. Any questions on that? If not, if you wouldn't mind clicking forward. So wastewater plant, so this project, you probably first saw me on this four or five years ago. It is an expansion of your sewer plant. Right now, you have the permit to treat 1 million gallons a day. From 2018 through the early part of 2021, you regularly exceeded that, and so that, that triggered all kinds of regulatory oversight and non-compliance documents, and it also triggered you engaging with a team like ours and engaging with the funding agency to expand the plant. So the new plant, or the expanded plant, will be twice the current size, a capacity of 2 million gallons a day. It is funded by USDA Rural Development, as your manager mentioned. Most of it is loan, it is a fairly sizable loan, that's a 40-year term. I forget the interest rate, it's below market, but I'd have to look at the document. However, a $6 million grant is certainly nothing to sneeze at. That's of all the years, over 20 years I've been working with USDA, $6 million is the largest grant I've seen them offer. And then you do have $1,495,000 of your session all 2023 funds that have not fully been allocated yet, so we've been working with your management manager, kind of holding that as maybe a budget shortfall for the wastewater plant project. We can talk more about that in just a minute. From a timing standpoint, one of the reasons this has been a quiet project for several years, as you know, we've been waiting on the discharge permit to be issued, there's some, a longer story to that, as you've heard, I won't go into that, but that permit was issued earlier this year. We are finishing design, and we'll start construction permitting later this year. It's a fairly significant project, it is. We call it an expansion, but it, it's really going to be a brand-new plant built beside your old plant. Your old plant dates to the 80s, and as you would recognize, a lot of it has, it needs to be either addressed or replaced, so we're going to repurpose some of the old structures, we're going to abandon and demolish some of the old structures, and we're going to build a brand-new plant right beside it with a slightly different technology. And we've been interfacing with, with your previous staff, Daryl, and your current operator, Kevin, we've been meeting with them regularly to get that going. Any questions on the wastewater plant?
When you said you're going to be, this will be, the new one would be up, the up-to-date quality?
Yes.
Everything would be on the technology part, and then what you replace would be upgraded as well?
That, that's correct. We, the, your current treatment process, right, so it's concrete structures, it's equipment, it's piping, some of it's aged and not useful, but concrete lasts a long time, so there are some concrete structures that have purpose. So some of your old, old structures and old processes, we're going to repurpose for something new, and then we're going to build a brand-new plant right beside it. Different technology, different treatment process, as you can expect, more modern technology, modern controls.
With up-to-date, with the up-to-date technology?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Great. Next slide, if you would. So, this is not really a project, this is more just funding, just to kind of refamiliarize yourself with it. Two years ago, when the state budget was passed in fall of 2023, Hamlet received, I think the actual number is 5 million, but 1.5% of it has to go for administrative purposes, so $4 million, $925,000 is actually what you receive, or will receive in your coffers. For water and wastewater projects, we have worked with your team and identified, we talked about a budget shortfall of the water plant, which has already been somewhat allocated. We've talked about an expected budget shortfall for the wastewater plant, and then there's some other projects in town that we've talked to your team about, but the real intention here is to get the water plant project going, get the wastewater plant project going, and then see where the budgets fall and see if there's money left for this. Yes, sir?
I have another question. When you come in with the new water plant and the new technology, would it be help-train our city employees, would they need to be retrained or help some training on it? This wastewater?
Well, I think my answer is going to apply to both, actually. So, there are two different things. We, the construction contract will require training of your staff on the new process, the new technology, the new equipment, the new controls, the new electronics. So there'll be hours and hours and hours of equipment manufacturers, equipment representatives, sales representatives coming in and organized training with your team, even with your management team if they want to participate, but certainly with your operators, and that would go for both the water plant and the wastewater plant. Now, the funding for this project and the capital project setup, it does not provide for broader plant operator training, right? As you can understand, that would be, that would fall under a different line.
I see.
Answer the question?
That got it.
Sure.
Now, these two projects will be ongoing simultaneously, right?
It is likely, yes, that the, at the middle to end of the water plant project, the wastewater plant project would start, yes.
Okay.
That, that's not cause for concern on our side, the wastewater plant is really, yeah, it's really, the water plant project will be very intimate, right? We will be in the middle of your operations every day, working with your operations team, a very strict sequence of what can be done, first, second, third. The wastewater plant is not as arduous because we're going to come to the side, build something brand-new, put it in operation, and then turn the old one off. That's a simple way of describing it.
Okay.
But there, there may be the opportunity to, to use some of this 2023 funding for a couple of water and sewer pipeline projects that we've talked to your staff about. Our recommendation, and I think your manager agrees, is just push that decision a little bit until you have clarity on the budgets. And then the last, and your manager mentioned one that I didn't put in the presentation I'll cover also, just this spring, you received notification that you received $300,000 in study funds. This is not for capital projects, this is for studies, $150,000 for water, $150,000 for sewer. It does require a 5% match, so 5% of, $15,000 will have to be paid by the city, but it's a, it's called an asset inventory and assessment, and what that means in its simplicity, the inventory is, what do you have, where is it, how old is it, how big is it, and what condition is it in? The assessment part of that is, when does it need to be replaced, what's it going to cost, and how should you plan from a scheduling and a budgeting standpoint, and a rate case, a system development fee case, how should you plan for these capital upgrades? fee case, how should you plan for these capital upgrades over a foreseeable time, 10 to 20 years in the future? These are, these are regular programs. This asset inventory's been around for almost 10 years. It's great to get one. It's foundational because it creates a nice book, electronic documents that your team can use going forward, that you can use going forward. It also, this is important, it is a prerequisite to receive funding from some of the other state and federal infrastructure funding programs. So when you can check the box that you've completed this asset inventory, it gives you extra points, frankly, on the application, which is always helpful.
So is this outside of the water plant, or is it inside the water plant, or both?
It's both. This, this is a comprehensive study water and sewer, so it's not just your plants. It's your pump stations, it's your tanks, it's your pipelines, everything about the, your entire system. But it will, it will have some internal components on your treatment plants also. Whatever's left that we're not replacing or upgrading will be included in this report as a line item for inventory and assessment. And one of the great things this will produce, because I don't believe Hamlet has a recent version of this, digital files and a digital platform, so that your team can walk around on their phone and with a map and see where your pipelines are relative to where they are, where they're digging, where they're moving. And that's a pretty powerful thing that we find. It also, it gives you digital files that if you want to, when you have interest in expansions or development inside your community, you can share with other engineers or other developers or other private entity, public or private entities wanting to, to extend your water and sewer lines, it gives them good planning documents. So it's, it'll be, give you a wonderful tool. Now, timeline here, these, these take a while. This is an 18- to 24-month process to get done, so be patient. There's a, there's, part of it, frankly, is getting months and months' worth of data, so we can give you a good baseline trend. Now, parallel to this, I didn't cover it, but you have also received, as your manager mentioned, through the same program, a 400, I think it's 400,000, your stormwater grant. $400,000 is not water or sewer. It is a stormwater asset inventory and assessment, and our team is about halfway through with that right now. It's everything I just described on water and wastewater, but it's applicable to stormwater. So all of your public and frankly, some privately-owned stormwater devices, pipes, culverts, inlets, ditches, drainage features, all of that's being surveyed, inventoried, sized, is it the right size? Is it too small? And then, of course, recommended upgrades and improvements over time to convey stormwater and prevent flooding. So that, that's undergoing also. I think your manager covered it. I wrote down the same notes. Frankly, was a little surprised when I wrote this, but over $21 million in grant for Hamlet, that's a lot, and 11 and 1/2 in loan. So you have some much-needed improvements. I think that, that from a funding standpoint, you have been fortunate. I'll say that. We work all over the state, and you have, you have done well from a funding standpoint. So, Mayor, I know you have a long agenda. I'll pause. Any questions for me or John, then I may answer.
I'm good. I'm just glad you finally put it all together on one page.
Thank you.
So that we can clarify that we, we're doing our homework.
I've been working on it a while. It's not just something we started yesterday.
No.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adam.
Next, we have Habitat for Humanity Properties. Presentation.
We do have Ms. Farrah Newman here from, from Habitat for Humanity. She is the new Deputy Director of Habitat for Humanity, and the first thing she's asked us to play is a video, so I'll try to get it up.
There are mornings that I'm driving to school, and I'll go and stop in front of the house, and it grounds me because I think, I think about how wonderful the gift that my students have given to a family, and the gift that Habitat and our community partners have given to my students.
The Pinkney Construction Pathways Program is an opportunity to bring students of Pinkney Academy together to build an entire home that will be sold with an affordable mortgage to a local resident.
The opportunity that this partnership provides for these students is they will earn high school credit, college credit, they will earn third-party credentials that are nationally and state-recognized, and this leads them to job opportunities here in our own community.
There is classroom time, but then there is hands-on time where they're getting to apply that knowledge. There's also a team-building aspect to it, and just the integrity that goes into being a home builder. So you can't cut corners when you're building an energy-efficient home, and you don't want to cut corners when you're building with Habitat. So I think it's bringing a lot to these students beyond the book.
More important than anything else, they're going to have this sense of worth and this sense of capability and a sense of hope in their lives that are going to broaden their horizons and motivate them to even add further licenses and certifications to their capability. And they're going to see how investing today often yields returns in the future.
This program has helped me a lot. I planned on graduating, but like, I didn't know what I was going to do after that and everything. But like, I really like construction, and I feel like I could go very far with it. Like, I love it, to be honest. It's one of the best things I've done so far.
When I grow up and I have my family, I know one day I'm going to drive by that house and tell my kids that I built that.
We've been able to bring an authenticity through this program, and they've been able to access it, where we used to say, you have this to offer the world, and the world is ready for you, and you have all this promise. Well, through this project, students who, it was hard to convince of that, see it, they feel it, and they believe it now.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me. I think there should be a little context before we played the video, but it's okay. My name's Farrah Newman. I am the Deputy Executive Director with Habitat for Humanity, and I'm also the licensed general contractor. I've been with the affiliate almost nine years, and I've overseen the building of close to 100 homes since I've been there. And in doing that, some of the things I really love doing is partnering with municipalities, because you need taxpayers living in homes, and I like to build homes. So one of the thoughts that came to fruition with some of the context to the video is the town of Carthage, excuse me, had some land that they wanted to dispose of. And there's a general statute in the North Carolina General Assembly that if you are building affordable housing, towns, municipalities can dispose of property for that use, and you don't have to go through an upset bid process. So that's what I did with the town of Carthage, and I required, I acquired some infill parcels. And the partnership that I had building that house was with a local high school, the community college, and with the town of Carthage. And so we were able to get students out on the job site for training of construction jobs. We were able to serve a family in the community, and I was able to get some land off of the books for the town of Carthage. So with that, as I know John from the town of Aberdeen, and he came here, and we started talking about ways we could partner, John said, well, the city of Hamlet has land that they possibly would want to sell you. So I identified some parcels, about six parcels close to Oakland Avenue where we already have homeowners. I think it would be a great opportunity for the town, as I know you guys are doing really great things with the sewer and water system. You want development to come here. And typically, the home buyers that we support help support towns and cities. So they typically are in the service-based industry. They're working at the hospitals, in the schools, and we think that this would be a good partnership if we could partner together, and you could sell me the lots, and I would build houses.
So you worked with John, or our city manager in Moore County?
I did.
And did that?
That's how I met him.
Okay.
And we love, we love grand, grandiose ideas. We just start talking, and we're like, well, what if we did this? And what if we did that? And for me, I think partnership is the way to go when we do things like this. I don't believe, that's the whole point of Habitat and why I love Habitat. We are a hand-up, not a handout. We do not give away houses. All of our homeowners have a mortgage, and I believe in the home, you know, the American dream of homeownership, and I believe in tax base. You know, you want people that have skin in the game. You want property owners. You want people to have a voice and to be part of the community, and that's what we do.
Thank you.
If you, if you had a range, what's, what's affordable housing? What's the amount?
So I think affordable housing, well, what we do is we base people when they come into the program on the 30% to 80% of the county's median income. So we serve Moore County, Richmond County, and Hope County as an affiliate. I build about 15 houses a year. That's a great question. It depends on who you talk to and what context you're talking to. So basically, we serve people that make $25,000 a year, up to $85,000 a year, based on family size. And we guarantee an affordable mortgage. So our homes are actually built to energy efficiency standards, so our homes are not built less than, but we just guarantee an affordable mortgage. We guarantee that their mortgage payment will not be more than 30% of their income. That's what we guarantee.
I think it's a super idea, and it's a wonderful program, and I certainly hope we'll be able to partner in some respect.
Well, I would love to. As you can imagine, infill is a good way to build. I do have several subdivisions going on, but they cost hundreds of thousands of more dollars that we have to raise and support our building, when I think it's smart to build inside a city where you already have all of the water and sewer and roads that you need, which makes our mission more sustainable when we can partner like this, and my building costs aren't as extravagant.
So that you don't need a motion, you don't need a resolution. This is just a presentation to let us know this is going on?
This is strictly information at this point. I do have several lots that we are working with Farrah on that I will want to bring to council, but I also wanted to get the information that you need to digest the, this, and then have conversations afterwards, and then come back together in October and make a decision on, on these lots that we have. Because at the end of the day, you know, like, like Ms. Farrah said, I've worked with her for, what, four years now? And the, the work that they do is amazing. The structures that they build are far beyond the North Carolina Building Code standards, and the people that are out building them are the people that are in this room, whether you're sitting up here, sitting where I'm at, or sitting in the population. It's volunteers that come out and spend their time to build somebody an amazing home. And those-
How many lots do you think we've got? What's our potential capacity?
I think right now, we're looking at six.
I picked out six.
Okay.
And I strategically did it in an area where people were about two blocks apart. They, they all had road frontage. They all had water and sewer connection, and they're infill lots.
You know, just to add too, I've worked with, with Farrah on, on projects that were one or two lots, all the way up to 103 acres with, what, 300 multifamily plus, and another couple hundred in single-family homes, commercial. I mean, it's, we've, we've done stuff all the way from just the minimum to the maximum planned development. And, you know, I've, I've always been impressed with the work that she and her team has done.
Well, I think the fact that you can do this level of work and still make it available to people who want to be a homeowner is phenomenal.
Well, thank you.
Did you have a question or comment? Mr. Martin? Did you have a question or comment?
I was just going to ask, you're talking about lots. Is that one house per lot, or multiple houses, more than one, one lot, or?
So-
One house, one lot?
One house, one lot. I like to stick to single-family detached. I like for people to have a little bit of a yard. You know, they have neighbors. They can have a dog if they want, you know, the American dream.
Well, I know a lot about this affiliate firsthand, as I was an employee for several years, and I've seen what great work they do. And yes, the homeowners are very worthy of getting a home, and they go through a lot of instruction, and, and I don't know what to call it, but, you know, a lot of work to get these homes. So I think it'd be a great idea.
Thank you.
We had a lady back here on Lackey Street. She come to council. It's been several years ago. I think she's across the street from Joe Brown. We built a house over there, Habitat did, and she come in thanking council for what we've done, our part in it. And they built the house, and she's still there, as far as I know.
Well, with that introduction, I would like to invite every one of you guys, as we partner with Richmond County United Way annually. So this will be our fourth-year building in the Briarwood community on Beeler Avenue, 601 Beeler Avenue. It'll be our eighth house in that neighborhood. And Thursday, Friday, Saturday is United Way Days of Caring, and if you guys wanted to show up, that would be great, for your support and just to see what we've done in that neighborhood.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is resolution to accept NCDQ Appropriations Act funding.
Madam Mayor and Council, as you guys know, and we've been talking about, I'm coming back to our, our grant funding, but we've secured the funding, and we're, we're looking for the, the final resolution. So, you know, this, this agenda item is to request city council approval of the resolution accepting the $4,925,000 in directed project grant funding awarded to the city of Hamlet under the 2023 Appropriations Act under Session Law 2023-134. And that's going to be administered through the Department of Environmental Quality, through the Drinking Water Reserve and Wastewater Reserve Programs. We've already kind of went through the background on that, so I'll skip that unless there, there's question. But the project allocation currently, we have $783,000 allocated towards the Southwest Distribution, Distribution System Fire Flow Improvements that the mayor and I have personally been working on to help some of our, some of our businesses, commercial businesses that, that are out in that area, to get the, the fire flow that they need, so that they can expand. We also have $1,650,000 towards our water plant rehabilitation and water system improvements, and another $2,492,000 in that resolution that goes directly towards the gravity sewer rehabilitation and wastewater treatment plant expansions. There's no match required for, for this grant, and the, the biggest part of this is the local impact. The word significantly offsets capital improvement costs that would otherwise fall into the city taxpayers through bonds, debt service, and utility rate increases. So the, these, these grants that we've been working so hard on over the last nine months are, are coming to fruition, and, and, you know, this is, this is going to take a big, you know, impact off of our, our taxpayers. So with that being said, we would need a, a motion for that resolution, and I, I have a recommended motion on the screen, pending any questions.
So that was my question. No, no match whatsoever?
No match.
Any questions?
I make a motion to move to adopt the resolution accepting the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality Appropriation Act directed projects grant in the amount of $4,925,000 and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Second.
All in favor?
No.
All righty. Next is the rezoning for the Bledsoe, for Mr. Richard Bledsoe.
So Richard Bledsoe, the owner of the property located at 493 North Highway 177, has filed a rezoning request to rezone a parcel from RA 20, which is residential agriculture, to be to general business. The planning board met in August and approved the rezoning, or recommended approval for the rezoning, excuse me.
Yeah. Do you want me to read this first?
Yes. Mr. Bledsoe couldn't be here today, but he submitted a statement just for any clarification for council.
All right. Reason for rezoning. The property at address 493 North Highway 177 in Hamlet was previously used as saw blade repair facility owned by Mr. Jack Carroll and family for many years. Mr. Carroll was nationally known for his expertise in repairing large saw blades used in the sawmill industry. The property transferred ownership to Coastal Legacy Properties LLC in July 2025, where we started to relocate the contents of the building to personnel currently working in the sawmill industry. The property is currently zoned as R20, and I respectfully request to have the property rezoned to B2 for commercial use and to match the surrounding businesses. My intent is to lease the property to businesses that fall within the B2 restrictions. Examples and target market for this would be plumbing, HVAC, electrical contractors, auto repair facility, warehouse storage, et cetera. We have an approved permit to connect to county water. I do currently own the adjacent lot to the left of this parcel and will potentially seek the same zoning in the future. I don't include with this zoning, so he doesn't include that with this zoning as I am unsure of that future use. Thank you for your time, consideration, and potential approval of this rezoning.
Madam Mayor, remember this is a public hearing, so before we move in any next steps, sir, if you, if you all want continued information on it, we can provide it. But when that comes to an end, we need to open up a public hearing and then close it after any comments are made for this rezoning specifically.
I move that we open a public hearing.
Fuck.
Do we have any comments on the rezoning?
Yes, my name is Zaiescu Latimer. In regards to the rezoning of that potential, potential parcel, there was an issue that I saw with it. The city of Hamlet spent thousands and thousands of dollars putting together a comprehensive plan, which many of you were part of. And that rezoning goes against that comprehensive plan. So it also looks like it's spot zoning. And anyone know what spot zoning is? That's when you place a particular zone in the middle of another zone, typically because you're probably gonna sell it for a higher rate, which goes against what morally we should be doing. At the very least, with the rezoning of it, he should have included the other partial. Now, my question is, why do we have a comprehensive plan that we spent thousands and thousands of dollars on, but we're not gonna follow the comprehensive plan and go against it? The comprehensive plan says for that particular zone, how it should be zoned, and that goes against that. It's also in front of or in the back of homes, if you hide, depending on how you wanna look at it. And it interrupts the flow of the RA by putting a B2 in the middle of it. So I thought it was, I thought it was not productive in regards to how the comprehensive plan was put together. And again, why have the plan if we're not gonna follow it? Thank you.
Mr. Latimer, did you?
Yes.
Go to disk that after planning?
I did, for that reason. I asked the gentleman, can you please just go ahead and refoul and add that zone, add your other partial with it? Now we have a clear delineation of property lines. That way, that doesn't hurt, even though the gentleman who owns the properties to the right of the sawmill, that, that gives him the opportunity to say, here's a clear line of what, maybe he wants to sell those properties. We don't know what that guy wants to do. And yes, he didn't show up, but I think it falls with on us to say, well, if this guy wants to do this, we need to protect, A, the comprehensive plan, and B, the, the owner of the property. And that would have gave, again, a clear delineation. The other issue, as a matter of fact, that I have with that is that the property was already, already listed as commercial before we even voted on it. And that was an issue. But negating that, it still goes against, against the comprehensive plan. So, thank you.
This is actually in our ETJ, correct?
That's correct.
Was the comprehensive plan for the ETJ or just for the?
Our zoning map goes out to the ETJ, and I believe our, our future land use map does as well. And this area is designated as mixed or transitional use because it is a corridor. I'm sure you're all familiar with it. You have the, the railroad across the street.
Yeah.
And you have a, a business there to the left as well. But yeah, it's, it's an area that supports this transitional neighborhood commercial activity.
I just wanna add to the, you know, Mr. Latimer's statement of this being spot zoning demonstrates a lack of knowledge in what zoning officials look at on a daily basis as Ms. Webb and myself are both certified zoning officials. So if this was spot zoning, we would have looked at it and questioned it. And then we would have immediately turned it over to the city attorney and said, hey, is this spot zoning? Because if it is, we need to go ahead and, and give guidance to the applicant saying, hey, this is probably gonna be looked at as spot zoning. We think it is. The attorney thinks it is, and we're gonna recommend against it. So again, it just demonstrates a lack of knowledge in zoning principles that are under General Statute 160D.
This was recommended for approval from the Planning and Zoning Board, wasn't it?
Yes, that's correct.
It's a four to two vote.
I've got a question about the rezoning. If the city has.
Can we, if, if there's nobody else to say anything, can we close the public hearing and open up comment for council?
All right. So I move to, to close the public hearing.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
No.
Well, if we don't, you can't ask your question, Oscar.
Can I? Do what? Amy?
Go ahead. You can ask your question.
You can ask your question now.
He answered my question.
No, no, you can ask your question.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I'm a little hard of hearing, 80 years old. But the fact remains that if the city owns some property and if it's classified or is owned as wetland, and the city puts it up for sale, does that land still, property still stay wetland?
I don't know how that has anything to do with the agenda item we're speaking about right now.
But the item I'm talking about, we've got some that's come up and people have asked to sell it, to buy it.
Then we need to put that on the agenda, but that's not the agenda item that's we're talking about right now, sir.
Well, you have your way, sir.
All right. Do we have, no, first we have to do the consistency statement. So we need to vote on whether or not this is consistent with the area and the land use plan.
Well, you know, there's B2 property beside it. There's industrial property across the street from it. And it's mixed use, and it's always been used as a commercial facility, even when it was a saw, saw repair shop. So I don't see that it's any different from what it's always been.
So do we have a motion as far as consistency? Does it or does it not meet consistency?
And before the council votes, you probably want to also know that even if you have a parcel that is not necessarily consistent with the comprehensive plan, you can still vote to rezone it if that's what you choose to do. And our statute says that essentially the plan would be amended accordingly. So I'm not telling you how to vote, but I just wanted you to be aware of that since there's some discussion about it tonight.
How do you make a statement?
Any other comments?
I make a motion that it's consistent. I make a motion that this is consistent with the area and I feel like we need to rezone it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
No.
Any opposed? All right. So now we vote on the rezoning. Do I have a motion?
I make a. Excuse me, go ahead, Tony.
I make a motion to rezone the property located at 493 Highway 177 to B, oh, is it B1?
B2.
B2? B2.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
No.
Any opposed? Okay. So item number 12, potential sale of Hamlet property.
So the city was approached with, by a citizen who has interested, who has interest in buying a piece of the city's property. This parcel was approximately 2,500 square feet. It's landlocked. There's the map right there. So it's actually landlocked and surrounded by properties on East Hamlet Avenue and Front Street. It's currently zoned B1. It's a vacant lot, but there is a service road adjacent that runs behind all of those So right now, we are again just gauging the interest of the council on if they would be interested in opening the upset bid process.
What would this do to the service road?
The citizen who was interested said it wouldn't affect the service road at all.
So it would remain open?
That's correct.
I wanna just add, you know, I, I looked at this and actually, within my, my contractual authorizations, I, I could have went ahead and, and got rid of this property from, from the city. But I didn't, number one, I, I don't like to do anything without being transparent to council and the public. And number two, I have my own concerns about this being through the alleyway and what it, it would do because it, it actually is a corridor and somebody can say, hey, this isn't gonna affect it at all. But until we actually know and get down there and do our own study, then, you know, I think McKenzie and I have talked about it a lot and I just wanted to put it over to the city and let you guys make the decision on it because I wasn't comfortable with it.
So you're saying the access road crosses the property?
Mm-hmm.
Not, not completely, but, but it does go into it.
Okay.
So a little bit of grass and a little bit of pavement is, is the property.
Yeah. And, you know, anytime that that happens, like, I, I would, I think that there's ways around it, easements, right, that, that could be adopted with that and probably would, would need to be. But, but again, you know, I, I just want it to be transparent and give my own thoughts on it and, and turn it over to council and let you guys make the decision on if this is something that we want to move forward with.
Who owns the adjacent lot? 9073 McKenzie?
That would be the church on East Hamlet Avenue. They own the, the parcel with the building on it and then also that small parcel next to us. And I believe the, that citizen approached them as well.
So the church on Hamlet Avenue that, that burned, had the fire or almost had the fire?
The car accident.
The car ran into it.
Yeah. That one. Yeah, so they own that 9073 as well as the 0039.
So both of those lots are traversed by that alley?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. It actually cuts by that 8167 and goes all the way. I think that's Raleigh Street. So it connects Raleigh Street and Front Street as a service road.
The 9073 would completely.
That's a better visual. There you go.
Right. That, that would actually completely cut off access.
It cuts, it cuts the corner of it.
On, on the 93, but on the 9073, it completely eliminates access from there to there.
Granted, GPS, until you actually got a server, surveyor down there, we wouldn't actually know. But, you know, looking at that from, from my lens, I was like, yeah, I'm not comfortable with this. Like, you know, again, let's just turn this over to you guys and let you all make a decision.
Because they can say one thing and do something else.
Any thoughts, TC? Thoughts to that?
Cost for us?
Thoughts?
Oh, well, I, I think the manager's right. I mean, it'd be good to understand what we own and we don't own. I mean, I look at that and it kind of looks like it started out as a public right of way and it sort of became a parcel. So I think if the city were to deed it, we want to have it surveyed and know what's there and then if there becomes an access issue, as a suggested easement agreement would be needed. So I think really.
It's 20, it's 2,500 square feet. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
I think our surveying would cost us more than what we get for the property.
That's right.
I don't think we need to worry about something.
I don't think so either.
I mean, that's my feelings on it.
Mine too.
Tonight, it's really just what do y'all want to move forward with?
I think also there, there's other options. And I, I did options like this when, when I was in Aberdeen. If he's wanting that for extra parking or something, we could do a long-term lease agreement and control, you know, what, what gets developed and what doesn't and, and still be able to control the access through there. So, you know, again, just food for thought.
So you don't really know what his plans are for that piece, small piece?
Nope.
So do we have a motion?
Well, I would just make sure that, that interfere with the access road at all. It's been there for 100 years and nobody's never used it or done anything, but they use the road back there. As long as it don't interfere with the access road, I wouldn't have any problem with it.
I think we probably need to find out if the parking is the issue. Take the manager's suggestion and maybe do a lease if they need the parking. You know, a long-term lease or something like that. I just, I don't feel comfortable selling it. And we're not gonna get rich off of it to begin with. That's my opinion.
Can we table it?
Yes, we can table.
And see what?
Absolutely.
A little bit further discussion.
Absolutely. I, I would recommend.
Talk to the prospective buyer.
Am I right, TC? If we continue it, we don't have to put it back on the agenda, but if we, if we table it, it's gotta go on the next month's agenda?
Well, I mean, council can direct it, further study to you all or table it to a specific date and time. It's only up to them. We could just say, bring it back when you have more information.
So what are we doing? Table or continue?
I couldn't hear what you're saying.
I'm sorry. I was saying that you all could defer consideration to a specific date and time, or you could just leave it open-ended and ask staff to do further research and bring it back when we have some answers to the questions that have been raised tonight.
But with that, it has to come back to council.
If you directed to. That's right, Mr. Stewart.
Well, I'm not comfortable doing anything with it until we determine how it affects access.
I agree.
You know, I don't have a.
The latter of what TC said?
You all just get with the prospective buyer, go look at it, see how it's, you know, I don't think you need to go over and hire a surveyor by any stretch of the imagination. But you can see how it's gonna impact that road.
So have we answered what we need to answer or do we need to?
Just make a motion to direct staff to do more research and bring it back to.
Staff does more research.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
No.
Any opposed? All right. Item 13, Memorial Baseball Field Spring Turf Management.
Hold on just a second, sorry. So, you know, bottom line up front, we talked about this in the last council meeting. And when it came to the turf management of, of Memorial Field, that was not budgeted for in this year's budget. So I wanted to bring it back to you. We got a quote. That quote is for $18,880 through Hodges Landscape. The services include pre-emergent weed control twice per year, fertilization of. The services include pre-emergent weed control twice per year, fertilization of turf five times per year, post-emergent spray, insecticide and fungicide application, irrigation system inspection, annual core aeration, sanding of low areas, and hardly raking of the infilled dirt. So what I, what I've, what I'm asking for is if this is something that council wants to do, that we're going to have to do a budget amendment, number one, and then, number two, directly just to put it in the budget going forward every year, until you all direct me otherwise, and then I'll just continue to put it in the budget, and it won't even, you know, be something that we, we don't really look at, and it's just until it comes to budget time. So the immediate impact, that appropriation in the current year through the, would be through a regular budget amendment, and then that long-term, it establishes the ongoing and predictable on annual costs of that turf maintenance. Our recommendation is that we do approve the budget amendment, Hodges does a great job, and I don't think we should lose that, and with Post 49 Memorial Field, we are developing something that is far and above the standard of any other fields that are around us, or within the state for that matter, and then, and then also, you know, direct me to include that funding in subsequent annual budgets going forward, which I've created a recommended motion. Any questions?
If it's not new turf, it's just maintenance of what we have.
It's the maintenance, I don't know if you, I think it was February or March, where, it was one of my first meetings, you guys approved $18,880, and remember where the field was before that, and then where it's at now, and a lot of that had to do with what Hodges Landscaping had done to that field, I mean, it looks great, and the kids are enjoying it, I think the parents are enjoying it, so, you know, $18,880 is, you know, for a city like our own, it comes at a cost, but this is a minimal cost when it comes to our parks and recreation, social programs that we have for our kids.
Well, and hopefully, if we're able to lease this for, you know, tournaments and things like that, we'll be able to recoup some of our costs, and I think that's one advantage of keeping it in tip-top shape.
We have actually, you know, it's funny you said that, because I was looking at the budget the other day, I get the monthly, and see what our expenditures and our revenues are, and I was looking at Parks and Recreation, and I was like, where's all this money coming from? It's from our sports programs, and it wasn't like that last year, but we increased our sports programs, we increased the application fees just minimumly, but it is having a huge impact, so is it going to pay for the Parks and Recreation Department? No, it'll never do that, but Parks and Recreation is a, is a social program by the city, just like our senior center, it's not a revenue-producing program that we run, it's something that we do for our young, for their families, and for our elderly.
I saw Mr. Maurice here, I was hoping, I wish that he was still here to give comments.
He stepped out.
He stepped out. You all have chatted tremendously about this.
100%, yeah, he's, he's in support of it as well, and he's, he's glad that, you know, he was, to go kind of back to Memorial Field and the mix-up there, we were under the assumption that during the turf management and improvement, the grants that Post 49 got for it, that we weren't going to be able to play on that field, and then Hodges came back with us, said, no, I have that, I have that project, I'm telling you, and I have a kid that plays soccer, bring him back to this field, that's fine, so, so, so we did that, and, you know, again, I'm not going to sit here and point fingers, I'll own that, and it was just misinformation, and we figured it out, and we adjusted fire, and now we're back on target, so, again, my recommendation is to go ahead and approve this funding for our kids and their parents, and for the community to enjoy it, and then direct me to put it in the annual budget going forward.
Y'all know me, I'm all about youth, so I moved to adopt the budget amendment appropriate, $18,880 for turf management services at Memorial Field for FY '25, with recurring funding included annually, until council directs otherwise.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I have one comment to make, and I think this is important, and, you know, it comes to light anytime we have some problems, but we allow anybody to play the recreation programs of the City of Hamlet, it doesn't make any difference whether they live within the corporate city limits, or whether they live outside the corporate city limits, or whether they live right across the South Carolina line, but I think it is, would be appropriate next year for the City of Hamlet to make a budget request to the Richmond County Commissioners to help fund recreation in Hamlet. They don't offer countywide recreation, and I know that they gave, if I'm not mistaken, $90,000 to the City of Rockingham this year for their recreation program, and I think it would be appropriate to seek money for us to grow our programs, manage our fields, include our children the way we do, because we don't, we don't build barriers around our city and say, no, you can't play in here because you don't live here.
I agree with that. I do too.
All right, item number 14, Hamlet Police Department Vehicles. Chief Karstow.
Mayor, council, citizens of Hamlet, I appreciate the time. Again, honored to be serving as chief of police for the Hamlet Police Department. Some of the things I've been working on since I've taken over is retention, recruitment, and equipment, and one of the major things that we've been looking at is our vehicles, and we've gone through and come up with some, some proposals for you to look at and consider. Currently, we have five non-police package 2022 Ford Mavericks with a pursuit rating, there's also a 2025, right now we're looking at Ford Explorers Police Interceptors. I have spoken to Deacon Jones Ford, who we originally bought the Ford Mavericks from back in 2022, I think they were about $22,000, $23,000, they are going to give us a trade-in value of $19,500 for them vehicles.
Wow.
Because they have less than 36,000 miles, actually, they have less than 24,000 miles on them, and that they are resellable, that they can get back, and we can get back most of our money. The price on the 2025 Ford Explorers, another city in North Carolina had ordered them, and they weren't able to buy them because of budget constraints, and so they have them listed at $39,666. So if we took a trade-in value of 19.5 and traded it in towards those new Explorers, we would pay $20,000 for each new interceptor. The maintenance cost right now, over the last three years, starting in 2022, we were at roughly $31,000, just parts and some labor, that doesn't include the labor cost that the city puts into it, that Brian and his staff put in down there. The following year, in 2023, we were up to $35,000 roughly, and then just last year, we were over $42,000. The mileage on the current vehicles that we have, can you pull that up? We have eight vehicles that have over, just under 100,000 miles on them, five vehicles are at 90,000 to 99,000 miles, and one unit is inoperable, it blew the engine on there. Most of these are Dodge Chargers, if you look at the miles on the cars, that doesn't include engine hours, where the cars are constantly running, so they put a lot of wear and tear on them, the Dodge Chargers are not made for those, and some of them, I believe one we have is a 2011 Dodge Charger, which has over 140,000 miles on it. It's just not safe, and with the cost that we're spending on repairing, we turned in one just a couple of weeks ago, we thought it was going to be a minor fix, we're looking at about $3,000 in parts, that does not include man-hours that Brian and his staff have put in at the garage. The 520, the five Mavericks that we have are non-police package and are currently only being used as spares, they were originally bought for sergeants to use, but they're not made for the daily ins and outs of police work, the braking systems aren't good, there's not a whole lot of room in them, you can't put a cage in them or anything like that if you have to do a transport, so a lot of times, if a sergeant had to transport somebody, that would put in that suspect in the front seat, which does not, is just not safe for that officer. And as across, I talked about maintenance cost trends, parts and labor only, over the last three years, it just keeps increasing. Why the Ford Mavericks are not suitable, the non-pursuit package, non-pursuit rated, lacks horsepower, handling, braking, and suspension for emergency response, limited interior space for MDTs, radios, cages, and gear, the durability of them, it's built for light duty, consumer use, not continuous patrol operations, and the safety limitations structured low capacity do not meet purpose-built police standards. The 2025 Ford Explorer Police Interceptors, like I said, they were priced, they're pricing them at $39,666 and 10 cents per unit, trade-in value for a 2022 Ford Maverick would be 19.5. Net per unit for the new interceptors would be $20,166.10 to outfit and stripe each vehicle with every lights, sirens, cage, equipment, would be approximately $87.65 per unit, and then the warranty on the new interceptors is three years, 36,000 miles bumper-to-bumper, five years, 100,000 miles powertrain warranty. First proposal is a cash and trade, if we took four of the Mavericks, we can trade them in and get two Ford Explorers, and pay the difference of $1,332.20, and then outfit them both for roughly $17,530. Proposal two, which is preferred, we can do what's called a lease to own, if we trade in four Mavericks for the Ford Explorers, we can finance through Ford $81,397.40 with an annual payment of $22,899.94 over the next four years, and then to outfit each one of those cars with the equipment, striping, would be roughly around $35,060. The one-year budget impact right now would be approximately $57,959.94. At the end of the four years, the city would own those vehicles. The first payment of the $22,000 would be due upon the contract, and then annually for the next three years after that, but you will start seeing savings on maintenance and repairs come around the fifth year, and then once we get through, if approved, once we get through that fourth year and we pay that lease, we can go ahead and look at, go ahead and look at another two to three vehicles through the lease option to start rotating these older vehicles out, and that's what we would do with these four, we would take the four highest miles, the ones that's been costing us the most, and turn them into, either strip them and surplus them, or go ahead and just use them as spares when needed. Benefits for this, officer and community safety pursuit-rated platform with test braking, handling, operational reliability, less downtime, standardized maintenance and parts, deployment-ready interior volume supports MDTs, radios, cages, equipment, and mounting, and the life cycle value, there's going to be a better resale value, warranty coverage, and reduced repair spending by year five. With council's approval, finalize the trade-in and lease paperwork, month one to two, vehicle delivery and upfitting training on new equipment, month three, full deployment, retire most of the age inoperable units and frontline service, and quarterly track downtime, repair costs, and response readiness, and report it to council. And here is just a listing of each vehicle that we currently have, and the mileage from, I believe, the latest ones that we have, all the way down to our Crown Victorias, and a lot of these miles were as of March, so there's probably even more miles on the ones. I know for sure the Crown Victoria, they're well over 200,000 miles, some of them.
Hmm.
That's it. Any questions? I don't know if I didn't cover anything.
We'll have a fundraiser.
Yeah, I know it's a lot to ask for, but just looking at the equipment, and we were, at one time, we had five vehicles down that were at the garage, and we were scrambling, and this was just in the last month or so, there were five cars at the city garage that we were trying to get fixed.
Do they maintain the lease option? Does the company maintains the cars through the lease option?
So they have, so they have the three-year, or 36,000-mile bumper-to-bumper, and then five-year, 100,000-mile powertrain warranty, other than that, we would do the oil changes and the basic maintenance on it.
Why do you prefer the lease option?
I think overall, because, because of the trade-in value on these Mavericks, we're going to save $80,000, because if you didn't, if we didn't have the trade-in value, you're looking at $40,000 per vehicle to lease, with this kind of deal and trading in those vehicles and the amount that we're getting back, it's an $80,000 savings.
And then always go to the newer?
Yes.
Go to the newer vehicles?
Go to the newer vehicles and retire some of these older vehicles for safety and for cost.
How many police officers do we currently have in our department?
Currently, right now, I believe we have 12, 13, somewhere around there, but we're currently working on recruiting, we've been able to do a good job at retention, and we have a few officers that we're looking at incoming in.
I'd just add to that, Madam Mayor, that recently, within the last month or so, we have had an enormous, and I mean enormous amount, of people interested to come into Hamlet Police Department. I attribute that directly to Chief Karstow and his capabilities and his leadership, because we're, we are healing within our police department, and we are creating an environment that everybody wants to belong to, so kudos to Chief Karstow for, for his work on creating a culture that everybody wants to be part of now.
Thank you.
Any questions? Do I have a motion?
So if we surplus, we'll surplus all four Mavericks, right?
Correct, and so this is, this is just a motion to go through the 10-day required public notice, and then we would publish that, and it's almost like the upset bid process, and then, and then they would come back in in October, and we'd say, hey, this is what we got for our bidding, and then from there, you know, we could move forward to divest those to Deacon Ford.
I move that we begin the process 10-day, open the 10-day process for bids, I guess they're bids.
Do I have a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, item 15, Hamlet Police Department Sidearm Retirement.
So as you all know, we do have a officer, Captain Matthew Norris, that will be retiring in October, and the purpose of this agenda item is to request city council approval of a resolution to authorize the sale of his service sidearm, and this is for the ceremonial value of $1, and that's permitted under General Statute 20-187.2. Captain Norris has honorably served for the Hamlet Police Department for three years and seven months, with an effective retirement date of November 1. Again, that North Carolina General Statute authorized us to award that for fair market value or for ceremonial value of $1, and it is a longstanding tradition within North Carolina, honor our retiring officers. I mean, say, you know, I don't think three years and seven months really, really outlines the service that Captain Norris has given, not only to Hamlet, but to this country, he has well over 26, I think he's 28 years of service, and, you know, making a decision to retire, and being somebody that's been through that, you know, it's a, it's a big decision, and it's also something that we as a city need to respect and also take care of those leaving us, because they may leave us on a day-to-day basis, but they're always going to be part of this family, so I'm highly recommending this approval, and have a recommended motion, pending any questions.
Any questions? Do I have a motion?
I move that we adopt the Resolution 25, 2025-19, authorizing the sale of a service sidearm Glock 36 serial BYZ H540 to retiring Captain Matthew Norris for $1 pursuant, pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 20-187. North Carolina General Statute twenty dash one-eighty-seven point two.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Ms. Pressler? Road closure for Seaboard five K. Be here before we know it.
Good afternoon. Thank you for letting me speak. I will be brief, I promise. With the Seaboard approaching on October the twenty-fifth and the five K, I have a resolution that I'm presenting to council for approval. Whereas the Forty-first Annual Seaboard five K will be on Saturday, October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, whereas the Seaboard five K begins and ends on McDonald Avenue between Rice Street and Austin Street. Whereas the safety of the runners and spectators, McDonald, on McDonald Avenue between Rice Street and Austin Street will be closed from six AM until ten AM on Saturday, October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Whereas the city agrees to close McDonald Avenue between Rice Street and Austin Street on October twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, between the hours of six AM until ten AM.
But this is just an annual thing, isn't it? We do it every year.
Yeah.
It is. We haven't officially approached council about closing the road, but the start and finish line is right there in front of Calvary, and there are a few houses right there. And we had an incident last year where someone tried to leave their house right in the middle of the race and wanted the finish line moved. So it was really unsafe and inconvenient.
So your recommendation is?
To please close that road from six AM until ten AM, and then the homeowners on that road would be notified that they could not leave between those hours, or they would make other arrangements for parking.
They, they would be able to leave. They, they would just have to, they would have to use a different parking area if they needed to come and go, so it didn't affect the start and finish of the race line.
Which could be Calvary Baptist Church right across the street, or park on a side street.
Right. There's plenty of parking other than right there that, where we're wanting to close the road.
I move that we adopt the resolution, closing McDonald Avenue from six AM until ten AM on October twenty-fifth.
I'll suck it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much. The next resolution involves the locomotive eleven fourteen and caboose fifty-two forty-one, which is our static display in Main Street Park, that in twenty twelve, the National Railroad Museum and Hall of Fame loaned it to the City of Hamlet for a term of twenty-five years. Their board met, and they have approved to transfer the ownership of the static display to the City of Hamlet. So I have another resolution, whereas the National Railroad Museum and Hall of Fame, Inc., Museum owns an engine eleven fourteen and caboose fifty-two forty-one that are presently located on real property at Main Street Park, Hamlet, N.C., that is owned by the City of Hamlet. And whereas the city and the museum entered into a twenty-five year agreement on July twenty-third, twenty twelve, that stated the museum would allow the engine and caboose to be open to the viewing public at the city said real property during regular business hours. Whereas the city provides such maintenance, security, and police protection as it, in its sole discretion, deems appropriate. Whereas the museum provides to the city keys or other devices or information that the city needs to order to control and secure access to the engine and caboose. Whereas the museum board met on June fifteen, twenty twenty-five, and voted to approve a transfer of ownership of engine eleven fourteen and caboose fifty-two forty-one to the City of Hamlet. So I'm just asking for resolution to accept ownership of the static display.
I make a motion that we will accept.
Thank you.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed?
This has come a long ways.
It has, and I'm really, I'm really proud of this.
It has. I was thinking the same thing.
And honestly, we have no way to move it, and they have nowhere to put it. So it's definitely a win-win.
It is. I'm, I'm just glad it's, it's over.
Tyree could drive it.
Possibly. But thank you.
Without the rails.
Thank you, Michelle.
All right. Moving on to other business, we have public comments. Who would like to speak? And there will be three minutes for each person to speak. And if you would state your name.
My name is Robert Cummins, and I stay in East Rock at him. I have Hamlet water, and the water stinks. It stops up my filters in my refrigerator. I have a filter in front of the house that stops it up. I'm having to buy filters every three months for my refrigerator and under the house. And that, that, I'm on disability, and I can't afford all of this. And the water bill is coming up to fifty-two dollars a month. When I first moved there, my water bill was twenty dollars. And now it's fifty-two, plus the water filters. I just wonder when they don't get the settlement aside the line and all this.
What's your name, sir?
Robert Cummins.
Cummins. C-U-M-M?
C-U-M-M-I-N-G-S.
What's your address?
Two forty Avio Eighth Avenue. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Escobar Latimer again, and I just want to kind of address a few things. I've never come in this chamber attacking or insulting the council here, or online, or in person, nor the administration. And I have a proven track history of coming into this chamber with concerns, but also solutions in a respectful manner. In regards to my education, masters, operations, masters in poli sci with a minor in law, with double minor in law and IT, valedictorian in network security and cybersecurity, so I think I can read a map. At the last city council meeting, I decided to review city water, the city's water consumer confidence reports, or the CCR, which is available on the city website. And I want to share a few concerns and clarify a few points. First, I believe that the city manager was reading their wrong years report to verify. I requested an electronic copy, and instead I was told to file a public records request, submit it to the city clerk, and wait for supervised access. This goes against the EPA guidelines for my request. The EPA states that I am to make a request directly to the water utility, and they are to provide me with a copy. That's simple. I'm still waiting on the report from the water plant, and my concerns with John's CCR, or report that he presented, it runs a year behind. So that means the numbers that he presented at the last city council meeting were not complete, and you could not have, it cannot fully support what he was saying, because the twenty twenty-five report doesn't come out till twenty twenty-six. To put it simply, partial information can paint the wrong picture, just as one verse taken out of a scripture can be misleading without the full chapter. Water quality data must be looked at as in its entirety. For example, John, John also pointed out that it showed zero levels in certain sections. But according to the EPA, as I reached out to them this week, and the labs they referred me to, zero does not mean no contamination. It means the levels are simply below the minimum reporting threshold. So you can still have contaminants in that water and still be a zero. And then I went to the water reports for twenty seventeen to year-to-date. Now that was a fun, this was a fun weekend, twenty twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-four reports, which showed that there was E. coli present in one year of the sample water taken, and several other years, the TTHM and HH five, two cancer-causing contaminants were present, which ingested over years can cause cancer. So until these wonderful studies are done, which will take about eighteen to twenty-four months, and before the building can even happen, and we still have the one-hundred-year-old filters that we are still in place, according to your LKC guest, and thank you for inviting him, with the history of serious violations of cancer-causing contaminants for several years, the cities, from the city's own reports, the recent sewage smell, and the discoloration.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you, John.
Who's next?
Good evening.
Good evening, brother Ray.
I'm here to address the downtown area's lack of progress over the last two years. Truthfully, we've been rotting away for more than a decade, and some of the faces I'm looking at now watched the decay and did nothing. Some of you own the vacant corpse properties that keep us from moving forward. Businesses have a short lifespan here. Threat stores, bars, restaurants, gaming stores, and the candy shop are all gone in a year. Excuse me. Dine eighty-two is now the second restaurant to occupy Amy Gwynn's property on Main Street. The Mighty Hail Marys is gone. Its replacement is non-existent. My beloved Axe to Grind survives, but surviving is all we're doing. Beach season has come and gone. There are no billboards celebrating the eateries that survive here and could serve the individuals who like to escape a bottleneck route on seventy-four for an hour to grab a sandwich. There are no tax incentives. There are no efforts for the greater good. There are simply long-established leaders looking after their own interests. What shall we do about our water? We can no longer pretend that infrastructure is healthy and will hold. When will you address that? Or are you hoping for a larger entity will incorporate Hamlet and solve all our problems? This looks purposeful, especially when I see council members attack citizens through the press for speaking their minds on these subjects. I believe Mr. Latimer here has had to digitally block some of you. On October second, I welcome the entire council to Axe to Grind to openly discuss the problems we are facing as a community and explore ways to move forward. Lately, Hamlet is in the news a lot. None of it is good. That is usually a solid indicator that change is needed, and that's why I'm now running as mayor, as writing candidate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Amber Daniels.
Good evening.
I want to first start by thanking you, and forgive me, I sound a little sick, I'm getting over a cold. I want to start by thanking the city manager for taking the ownership of the miscommunication, misinformation around Memorial Park and why we weren't able to, while we were told at first we couldn't go play soccer out there this year. So thank you for owning up to that and correcting it and getting us out there now. I also want to challenge the board. I heard you all speak on that you, the youth is a pride of Hamlet, the youth is something that you all really engage in, that you support, and that you want families to be able to go out somewhere and have somewhere safe and fun to enjoy themselves. I appreciate the commitment you made tonight to Memorial Park, to keeping that grounds obtained and maintained over the years. I challenge you now, I look at the other ballparks out here in Hamlet. We have young kids practicing out in South Hamlet on the Buttercut Field. That's not properly secured. The fence is open. We've got stray dogs, random dogs, blocked dogs coming and playing soccer with the kids, taking the balls from them, taking the pieces from them. They may be friendly in that moment, but don't open Hamlet up to be the next mauled attack out here. You look at Scotland County, our neighbors, they just had a young man that was mauled by a dog riding his bike endlessly. You look at Moore County, they just had two elderly people mauled by dogs. I know animal control is something that we're battling right now in the city, so I just challenge you to look at those things when we're making decisions on where our youth are going to play at. In addition to that, I have two small kids that play soccer for Hamlet. We pay the parks and recs fee. I don't do the lateness. We pay it early, thirty-five dollars, don't get that ten-dollar fee on there. When you think of values, I raise my kids very close to the Bible. I raise them very close to morals and what's right and what's wrong. I have a seven-year-old daughter that plays soccer. Out there at the Buttercut Field, there is male genital parts drawn all over the bathrooms that they're supposed to go use out there. How is that appealing for a family to come out here and practice, and I have a little girl that's being subject to that type of image, you know? So that's where I open, I just challenge y'all to look at all the ballparks. Don't just look at Memorial Park. I know that's where we play at. I know that's the big eye for Hamlet. We all drive past that, but look at all the parks out here, all the security, all the safety, all those things. Thank you.
Amen.
My name is Dr. Amber Daniels.
Thank you so much for that.
You're welcome.
That's been a concern that's been brought to me about South Hamlet. And you go down and look at it, had the fence removed, stolen, whatever.
Yes, sir.
Gone down, and it looks bad, and all the graffiti that's put up down there.
Yes, sir.
It's an unsafe place.
Yes, sir.
So it needs, and I couldn't find out it, from what I understand, and I don't know where the fence got to, or the poles.
I don't either, but I see all the cameras going up around town. Maybe we put some out there, we might figure it out, hold some people accountable.
Thank you for bringing that up.
You're welcome.
And I share a lot of your sentiments. We have done that before, and the fences are torn down, and we've, we've policed it, and we've, I've been down there myself.
Yes, sir.
And so it, it, it's been done, and it's been torn down, but I share a lot of your sentiments, so thank you so much.
I appreciate that, and thank you for what y'all do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who else? Come on, Pat.
After sixteen years up there, I couldn't say nothing, and now I can say whatever I want. I'm just kidding. I just come today to, I'd like to make, or at least for you guys to take for consideration, naming the Veteran Park on Veteran Drive after Bobby Moser. Eddie, you might have been on board with us. I know Tony, you were on board. Abby, I think you might have been here during that time on and off. That was his dream, that was his design, everything over there, from the sidewalk, from the concrete that forms the ribbon, the ribbon that used to be so popular for our soldiers to return, that, that people would wear, you know, for the soldiers that were serving overseas in conflict. I'd just like for us to consider, or you guys to consider, dedicating it in his memory, because that was something that he was, I don't want to rename it, just dedicate it maybe. I don't, whatever y'all want to do with it, I would just like for you to consider that. Again, he, he served this town, I'm not sure how many years, nobody's here that would probably know. Everybody's gone.
A long time.
Yeah. Twenty-plus years. He was a veteran himself, and I'd just like for you guys to consider that. I got other things I could talk about, but I'm not. Y'all've got enough on your plate, and I appreciate what you do. That's a thankless job. Government's a thankless job, all you guys. I appreciate what you do. I just know the water issue, we dealt with it for sixteen years, I was up there. So it's something, and when we deal with a, with a late source like we've got, sometimes this is out of our hands. Sometimes the way that water flips out there, and what y'all Sometimes the way that water flips out there, and what y'all talk about, is the honest-to-God truth as far as the smell. So I know that that is something you're not going to be able to solve, unless you tap into the river or something and get different water source. So I know that you got a lot on your plate, and I, I appreciate y'all taking time to listen to me.
Pat, thank you for the recent pressure washing you did also at the memorial that you're talking about.
Um, yes, my name is Gwen Sue. Uh, I just want to say that some...
What's your name?
Gwen Sue.
Gwen Sue.
Yes, um, some attention needs to really go towards code enforcement um, on all the streets, not just Main Street. If we could, I just had, uh, my neighbor had a tent, everything all in their backyard. And I live on Madison Avenue, and I had to have the man come over there and tell him to take the stuff down. And their house is, is junky. Code enforcement needs to be enforced a lot more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Good afternoon, Scott. I wanted to mention to you about, um, my street. Uh, I live on Minter, on this side of Minter Avenue. And, uh, there were two... Something, something happening with the houses, a couple of houses on the, right down, down below me. And, um, they were dug up. The roads were dug up. And I guess they put new pipe or something down there, but they haven't repaved it yet. And one of them's been there for about three or four months, and another one was a month ago. But cars come by there real fast, and they, some of them don't slow down. And there's a lot of rocks and stuff and gravel. I wonder if there'll be a chance to, uh, pave those or put a speed bump there to, uh, slow, slow these drivers down.
You talking about a speed bump?
No.
Either a speed bump or just pave, pave both. It's, it's one, they're about... This, from that door, this desk to that wall apart, where they've been, uh, opened up and haven't been closed up.
Or they repaired a leak or something.
Yeah.
I've got one in front of my house that's been that way since 1st of July. They're having a cock, came over there, did a great job fixing it on repair broke line, but it's still open hole, and water's running down it when it rains, in when it rains. The cars are trying to dodge the cones and just waiting to hear, see, uh, hear a head-on accident.
That's pretty dangerous.
John, is there any timeline for when these repairs might be done?
I don't personally have a timeline. Um, I think Alan's here and Aunt Robert's here. But it, you know, from, from my understanding, that this is a systemic issue with, with water breaks. So I'll give you an example. They go and fix one water break, and for every one they fix, there's three more that pop up. And so they're going around and trying to, to, to fix the leaks. And then it's leaving the, the roads in, in this condition. Uh, um, so, you know, I, I think that, that our Public Works Department is doing the best we can. And just, I think it was yesterday, we had a forced main break. It's a big issue. You know, so that's where the efforts are, are going to right now. And, and, and a municipality as small as we are, and the, the personnel that we have, the number of personnel that we have to deal with these issues that are, are real issues, uh, it's just, it, it, it's hard to, it's hard to get to everything at once, especially when the priority is fixing the water. And then coming back in and trying to repave, um, is, you know, whole another process. And, uh, from my understanding, they'll get, you know, several of them patched up. And then when they find a, a gap to where, in time, to where they can go and patch, they'll try to patch all of them at once.
I think the one he's talking about on Minter Avenue, I went up that way today. There's two of them, and one of them is fairly, fairly level, but the other one has hollowed out. That's right. So it's right much of a, a bump.
Yeah.
That might be simply just some crush and run.
I'll talk more with, uh, with our Public Works Department. And, and again, like, you know, this, this is a big issue. And, and I've identified it as an issue. Our, our Public Works has identified it as an issue. So I, I don't want the citizens to think that, that, that we're ignoring these things. I mean, it's literally one of those things where they're chasing their tail just to try to keep water in the pipes. Because every time that, that one gets fixed, there's one to three more that, that pop up.
We've had four major line breaks, haven't we, this year?
Uh, and those were the major ones, you know, that cost the city, you know, almost a half million dollars, uh, to fix. And then, you, you know, the, the, the truth is, is we got, we got systems that are utilities that are underneath the streets that are, are hundreds of years old. So we're trying and working diligently on a daily basis, day in and day out. Like, these guys come in here in the middle of the night and, and work on this stuff. Uh, and, you know, again, we have $35 million going for critical infrastructure improvement, our wastewater and our water specifically. So these are things that we know. They're things that we're addressing. Uh, it's, it's just, they take time. And, and I apologize. I'll do anything I can to move our departments faster. Uh, but, but it's not a, it, it's, it's just, it's part of the process.
It is what it is. Isn't that the expression they use?
Do we have anybody else?
Hello, my name is Sean Smith, and I live on Minter Avenue. And, um, I want to second what that last gentleman said about the, the water main fix or whatever they did. Um, I have, uh, cats. And the thing about cats is you can't fence them in. They're little ninjas, you know? And they run wherever they want to go. So everyone knows on Minter Avenue, everybody drives way faster down that street than they should. It's a through street. It just happens. So, uh, but ever since you fixed this thing, and, and Ms. Abby mentioned that hollering out part, when people drive, they have to slow down so they don't bottom out. It's been the greatest experience since I moved there.
Well, maybe we're living alone.
So don't fix it. Or put a speed bump. Thank you.
Reverse incentive. That's right. Anybody else? Okay. That's what we got. Comments of council. All right. Mr. Martin?
Uh, I think I've enough to be seen so far. I don't have any further.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes, uh, I'd like to thank all the attendees coming in for the comments on it and concern on it attended. And I'd also like to, uh, when I made a remark about the, uh, uh, rezoning, we were talking about rezoning land. And I brought, and I brought up a question. And I sit on this council elected by the citizens of this city, and I have the right to ask a question if it's concerning the property. And I was rudely interrupted by our city manager, which I took offense to. And he tried to embarrass me with it. And I'd like him to know, I don't, as I've told him before, I don't work for him. I work for the citizens of Hamlet, of whom I was elected by. So I don't have to make an item on an agenda. I can ask questions and give answers if I can. So that concludes my remarks.
Mr. Clues.
I hope we got plenty of time.
Oh, go for it.
First of all, I want to, uh, thank Seth Dixon for being here tonight. Uh, Seth is taking a, he's going to be an adult gurn- gurnatology. Gurnatology? Okay. I knew I wouldn't say it right. Primary care nurse practitioner. And he's here, uh, and he's going to the University of Cincinnati in Ohio. So he is here doing, uh, watching us and listening and everything. So we appreciate Seth being here tonight.
Hey, we're a real study.
And, and Seth's also a citizen of Hamlet. He lives on Main Street. So we thank him for being there, and, and so we appreciate that. Uh, I'd like to thank everybody for coming. If you don't come to City Council, you don't watch it online, you don't know what's going on. Uh, I have quite a few things to talk about. You might not want to hear what I got to say.
You were serious.
So I'm serious.
You were serious.
Yes, ma'am, I'm serious.
All right.
I've looked on social media.
Is it on the agenda?
Speaking of the agenda, since you've made that comment, you, it's the only thing the city manager was saying that had nothing to do with what we were talking about.
You're wrong.
I disagree, sir.
I disagree.
Uh, but I've looked on social media. I've seen the comments on social media. I've seen a lot of stuff. I don't get on social media and put my stuff out there. But what I will say is, if you want to talk about me, talk about me. I ain't got a bit of problem. If there's something that you think the council has voted on or done something about... I had somebody come up to me at the Raider football game in Wilmington and said, "Council voted on this." I said, "No, we did not." So if there's a question, come to me and ask me, please. Don't attack somebody's family.
Amen.
I do not agree in nobody attacking somebody's family. So I stay off of social media. Um, I heard we got a raise. All the council got a raise. It was in the budget. Every one of us rejected it. We didn't take the raise. And I'm going to tell you why we did. Ninety per... Well, all of us. All of us said, "We had to raise the water. We're definitely not taking a raise." And folks, we don't get rich. I don't even know what, I guess maybe $35, $37, $38 hundred a year. That's what we make.
You must make more than I do.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I, whatever it is, I just know I get paid twice a year. And it was last check I got was $1,700. You can look it up. So, yeah, I can retire on that for sure. I think, um, you know. Uh, question I did have is, uh, some people have asked me when Main Street's going to open. The railroad is moving slow.
Amtrak.
Amtrak. Okay, excuse me, Amtrak.
Amtrak.
Amtrak is moving slow. So if we could find out some kind of timeline when they're going to open Main Street. Um, I want to thank the city. Someone's already mentioned about Day of Caring. Tomorrow, the City of Hamlet employees is going down to McLaurin Center, and they're going to pack bags for the backpack pals. Uh, and then Friday, the rest of United Way is going down there and pack bags. So I appreciate the, uh, City of Hamlet and the employees doing that. Uh, I am part of the backpack pals, and so we really appreciate all the help. We have volunteers. It's all 100% volunteers. Lot of talk about the racetrack. I don't want anyone to think that I'm not for the racetrack. I'm all for the racetrack. I think it's great. What I'm against is for the county taking the taxpayers' money and giving it away. They could have done a loan. I don't feel like they should have done. Here you go. We're going to give you $375,000. And if you do some research, it's been done twice. I was looking, we got $13 million for water treatment. I know people are thinking, "My water smells." My water smells. It did. My water's bad. My water was brown. I can tell you what, those guys down there at the water plant, they work diligently. They work. They test that water every two hours. They send it to the state. Mr. Latimer has said, "At one time, it had this chemical in it that could have caused cancer if you drank it over about 150 years." So that's kind of misleading.
That's not what I said.
The wheels of progress move slow. We're doing all that we can do. Uh, I want to remind you that the Hamlet Police Department has a program that they've started, and Rockingham Sheriff's Department calls it "Shot With A Cop." We're calling it "Shot With A Police Officer." If you have the extra funds, you would like to help them, uh, with this. They want to help the underprivileged. I noticed Mr. Mills got up, and he talked about business. Mr. Mills, I was in business for 42 years, right up here on this corner, still on the building. I was here when they closed the road going across the bridge and Main Street at the same time. I had an auto repair business. A lot of my business come down Main Street or turned and went down Rice Street. Now, how do you think that affected my business? We want you to be prosperous. We want you to make all the money you can make. We try to do everything we can to help you stay in business. And we're working as hard as we can to do all we can. We don't want to see these empty buildings. I don't like that. I ride down Hamlet Avenue below the tracks and have the buildings roofs that fell in. I was looking at a city somewhere where they tore the whole section down and built something new. I'm hoping to Hamlet can be that way. I've lived here, I don't know. I've lived here 50...
80 years?
Almost 80 years, it feels like. But I mean, I own property here. I own the business here. I've got stuff. I'm invested in Hamlet. And I want to see it prosper, and I want to see everybody in Hamlet prosper. I'm not just, you know, we're trying to do all we can. So please, please know that we are. And as the mayor's already said, Pat, thank you and Doc for pressure washing out there at Veterans Park. We appreciate that. The ladies already left, but you can go online and you can report a code enforcement issue. If there's an issue, you can report any issue. The, the street on Minter, if you wanted to report that, you can go online and report it. And then the code enforcement officer gets that information. And I appreciate everybody's time. I'm sorry I was so long-winded.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Stewart?
I just want to thank everybody for being here this evening. Um, believe it or not, this is how we get stuff done. It, it, it warms my heart to see this place full. I haven't seen this place full maybe all year. I'm not sure. We've, we've had pretty good meetings, but it's full. And we won't always dis... We won't always agree. But that's how we get stuff done. When you talk about your neighborhood and, you know, when I see people in Walmart or Food Line, that won't get it done. Coming to the meetings gets it done, and, and expressing your concern gets it done. So thank you guys so much, and I hope you can believe that we truly make the best decision that we feel that we know how to make. Um, and I appreciate the folks that, that think that, or decide to possibly be on council one day or be the mayor. That's, that's how we keep going. That's how we keep flipping. And everybody's decision works. Everybody's decision matters. Representation matters. All that stuff matters. So thank you so much. One of my concerns for citizens was the Hamlet, uh, the Main Street Amtrak and opening up. So he mentioned that, so would definitely like to, like to see that. Um, thank you to all the citizens that came. Thank you to all the city employees. And lastly, uh, you know, I always leave with, 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 uh, with a juvenile or lasting impression with our citizens, but this is Suicide Prevention Month. Want everybody to be aware of that. Check on your strong family members. Check on your strong friends. Everybody have something. Everybody have something. So check on folks. Give them a phone call. And let's see if we can possibly do our part to, to bring that rate down as well. But thank you so much. Thank you all for coming.
Mayor Procham?
I don't know what's left to say. First of all, I would like to thank Mr. Clues for what he said, I think, too often. And I have addressed this with individual citizens over the last four to six weeks. You cannot always rely on what you read on Facebook. And you cannot always believe what everybody says to you if you don't examine their motives. And, um, you know, I didn't even know all of what he's put out there, so that's kind of concerning. But at any rate, we, we had Mr. Kiker here, Adam Kiker from LKC Engineering, because of all that had been said and written and everything else about the City of Hamlet's water and the insinuations that we were not doing our jobs, did not care, did not respect the health and welfare of the people that lived here. And I hope you can see that that process is just as bureaucratic as anything you will ever do in your life. You have to have permits. You have to have grants. You have to have loans. And it's month after month after month of writing and waiting and writing and waiting and writing and waiting. But we have to wait. Now, if we can do sewer and water, and the taxes can get high enough to pay for it, but I don't think that's an acceptable option for anybody in this room, including me. We try to do it responsibly, and we have had excellent results, as he pointed out. We've had larger grants than he's, any other communities our size that he has seen. And that's through the effort of our administrative staff, our previous administrative staff, the people who initiated this problem and who we have fought consistently. It's, I've done water and sewer issues here. I've been here a lot longer than most of you've been born. We've been dealing with water and sewer in Hamlet for 40 years, folks. Our infrastructure is ancient. And you can't dig up every street, or you end up with road cuts everywhere all over town. You can't replace every pipe. We can hardly keep the major sewer break, a major water breaks covered because they occur constantly. But the people sitting in the back of this room work for the City of Hamlet, and they work their butts off. Day in, day out, seven days a week, 24 hours a day if they have to. I've seen them on Christmas Eve down at the intersection of 177.
74.
Patching a water break all night long, freezing cold temperatures. But they, they could have been at home. So when you insinuate that we don't do our jobs, or that we don't supervise the people that work for us, it's insulting. You know, like he said, we don't make enough to, to be insulted. And I told one lady, she said, "Well, somebody said that somebody was in their pocket, yada, yada, yada." That's ridiculous rhetoric, people. If you can't find the truth, don't say anything at all. So as far as we're concerned, we appreciate you. We appreciate your problems, and I'm glad you're here. And anytime, come, discuss, sit, learn. Be a part of the city, not a part of the problem. On a brighter note, I had a person contact me today that would like to build a memorial at Mary Love Cemetery in Potter's Field. He is going to... He is going to, he wants to build a building out there that will house the urns of a hundred individuals since we no longer, excuse me, have grave space, and he will construct the building, put a monument on the top, some kind of appropriate angel figure or something, and build the niches inside so that people will have this as an option for burial if they cannot afford the cost of a funeral, or don't have a grave, so he's particularly interested in doing it up there, and I think he'll do a beautiful job, so I, I have asked him to approach you with drawings, and let you know what he intends to construct, and I can assure you that he is up to the job.
I think that's a wonderful suggestion.
So.
Best one.
Good night. Okay. The only thing I'm going to say about the water is that this council pays for, uses, drinks the same water everybody else does, so we're all in this together. Lions Club is this week, the eleventh, twelfth, thirteenth. Senior Center is bringing back Bingo, five to eight P.M., all three nights, right, Amanda?
We're only hosting Bingo the three nights from five to eight. We're doing that with the help of volunteers and wonderful community donations.
All right.
I didn't hear that.
That is all I have. So, motion to go in a closed session for attorney-client privilege and personnel.
Same move.
Okay. All in favor?